Good evening everyone and welcome to our board meeting tonight on January 12th, our first meeting of the school year. Welcome everyone and please stand and Mr. Kement will lead us in the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, for the record, everyone is here. Welcome back Ms. Green. We missed you very, very much and we're glad you're back with us. Before we start, this past week was an extremely emotional and difficult week for our high school students, our staff, our administration, and for all those who didn't even know Joe Manfreda. He was our high school junior who passed away unexpectedly with genetic causes. Besides being an A-plus student and top of his class, he ran cross-country, track, he was a wrestler, and he did those things so well that he was given the name of Ruthless Joe by his classmates and teammates. He had a great heart and was a role model for the other students and would do anything for them. The many tributes that were given to him by his students, staff, and friends at his funeral was heartbreaking. One of his fellow students sang Amazing Grace and she did a beautiful job. Roseville has, hands down, the best group of students and staff anywhere. Please don't forget to give your student that extra hug or even a call tonight. I know I did because you never know what can happen. Rest in peace Ruthless Joe. You will be missed. If we could have a moment of silence, please. Thank you very much. Next, the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of December 15th. Motion please.
Make the move.
Whoops. McCartney? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Next is School Board Recognition Month. We need this tonight after this tough week we had. So I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Lefebvre.
Is this working Joe?
Nope.
I need it. Welcome. We're gonna take a few minutes. As you know, it's January of School Board Appreciation Day in our month. And what we're gonna do is we have each of the members come down and each school has volunteered to say something, to saying something, whatever. I say this every year and I just wanna remind you, it's tough to compete with cutesy, so if the two middle schools or the high school happen to fall around some of the elementary schools, they are just as sincere. But they just express themselves differently if you've had a teenager. Okay? So we're gonna start off, Mrs. Green, if you would, move your way down here.
Can you go down here or do you wanna stay in there?
And Roseville High School. Whoever's representing Roseville High School, if you could come up here, please. Come right up here guys. Right up there so they can get a good shot of you. And I'm gonna give you this mic and if you would kinda introduce yourselves and whatever you've got from this table.
Hi, I'm Anthony Moss and I'm a senior at Roseville High School.
Why don't you guys come on here? Yeah, I feel like I'm back in school again on lunchroom. Okay, thank you.
I'm Violet and I'm a junior at Roseville High School.
And I'm Kennedy Chapman. I'm a senior.
And we'd like to thank Mrs. Green for all her hard work by giving her like a watercolor painting by Miriam Oloko from 10th grade. Just for all your hard work that you do.
Oh, that's very nice. Okay.
First of all, I'd like to thank you very much. It's indeed a pleasure for me to be back. I've been extremely well-witted for about six months in the high school. And prayers, the cards, and everything that I got from everybody has been just wonderful. And I like to say, in Roseville, we would put our students up against anybody. We got a super duper team. So, I wanna thank everybody for your time, thanks for the lovely paintings, I wanna thank the parents for their involvement, thank the staff for everything they do. And I'm not quite back where I was, but I'm fighting every day to do what is my responsibility. So thank you everybody so much. Thank you guys.
Mr. Headmark of the assistants, would you like to say anything or... Very good. Thank you. We know all our principals are here tonight and we appreciate that as well. Thank you very much.
At Kaiser Elementary School, if you could come up, please. I think they would appreciate it more. Is it easier to turn to the middle more to be seen?
Oh, look at the little ones.
This is what I told you about competing with cutesy. Do one of you want the mic or do they need the mic? No? Okay.
Mr. D. the Port trustee, can he fix it? Mr. D. the Port trustee, yes he can. Time to give Izzy such a lot to do. Building and fixing the R.C.S. school. Mr. D. and the gang had so much fun. Working together to get the job done. Mr. D. the Port trustee, can he fix it? Mr. D. the Port trustee, yes he can.
Hang on a second guys, I'm gonna introduce you. Do you wanna say your name on the mic?
Rachel.
And who did you bring with you tonight Rachel? Who's here with you?
My mom.
My mom. Wanna tell them your name?
Madison.
And who's with you tonight Madison?
My mom and dad.
My mom and dad.
Harmony.
Who's with you tonight?
Mama.
Hi mom.
You didn't bring the baby brother though? Is he sleeping? No?
Comet.
And who's with you tonight?
My mom.
My mom.
Yep, we see it right there. Mr. D. Fleece, Kaiser Elementary would like to thank you and also the other board members for everything you do for our school district. The vocational childcare class from the high school comes and works with Ms. Willis's class. Thank you Ms. Willis and Mrs. D. Thank you to our high school students for helping out and we have a small token of thank you. Thank you for everything.
Thank you guys, you did a really great job. I really liked that. And thank all the staff and the parents and Roseville's a great place to live and spread the word. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Switnowski, if you could come on down. Roseville Middle. Now, as a middle school principal for years, I know you guys are just as cute. In your own way.
You guys come down in the middle of the board room here so Joe can hear you better.
Mr. Switnowski, we want to thank you for being part of the Roseville Community Schools family and serving on the Board of Education. We would like to present you with a small token of our appreciation. Please know, we think of you as a Roseville Wildcat and we are glad to have you part of our Wildcat family.
Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
I wonder if I still have my Letterman sweater at home that I can put that on?
60 gigabytes.
Oh, look at that. The computer. Wow. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
This is always one of the, my favorite nights. There's a couple throughout the year and words can't express, you know, what you guys do for us and, you know, what we do for you and hopefully, you know, as I've said all along, I'll put Roseville up against anybody in our surrounding areas. Thank you again.
I love listening to you. We have the National Junior Honor Society here that presented to you. And the card was made by one of our students in one of our art classes who's an A-creator. And I'd like to have them introduce themselves and tell what your position is if you don't mind.
My name is Colleen and I am a teacher.
My name is Gady and I'm the vice president.
My name is Asher McCollum and I am the president.
Ask who they came with, their parents.
Who came with you guys today? Tell us so you are Miss Addison. And introduce the adults in the group here. Mr. Lewinsky.
I'm Mr. Lewinsky, I'm the assistant principal at Roseville Middle School.
I'm Donna Robinson, I'm the assistant principal at Roseville Middle School.
That's a live one.
Mr. McCartney, and Eastland Middle School. Oh, here they come.
I don't get cutesy?
Yeah. It's come. They haven't abused you yet. Are you gonna, one of you guys wanna grab this?
My name's Evan, 8th grader at Roseville Middle School. Not released. I'm not good under pressure.
Well, next one?
My name's Ryan Schumpke, I'm an 8th grader and we represent National Junior Honor Society.
Mr. McCartney, on behalf of Eastland Middle School, we'd like to present you with an Eastland Middle School sweatshirt as well as a card that was made by some students in our 8th grade art class. And thank you for all that you do. I've known you for a long time and I know the dedication that you show to the district, to the students here, and thank you to the entire school board.
Very good. Thank you very much. I have to go around and thank every one of the people that signed this, right?
Absolutely.
Thank you all. My colleagues pretty much said it, you know, we're a great district and this week is fantastic for us, so, thanks for all your hard work.
Thank you. Do you guys wanna introduce anyone who you're here with, besides me?
My mom, my dad, and my brother are here.
Command Elementary School. Uh-oh, what'd you do? Did you break that?
Springed it.
And then face the man with the camera.
Alfred, you look like one of the kids out there.
Yeah. Good evening everyone, my name is Paul Schumer and I'm the principal at Kement Elementary. Still gotta get used to saying that, once in a while I still slip. I'd like to introduce our students here. First of all, we have the Parkers, we have Vanessa and Adriana, we have Justine and Jaclyn Brun, we have Olivia Skinner, and we have Casey Parker. And, I'm sorry, Grace, you could've corrected me. That's her mom, Casey. But anyways, they're gonna, the art class made a little card, actually a big card for Mr. Francis Coney and they've got a little presentation for him.
Greetings to Roseville Community Schools Board of Education Superintendent Kement and Administrators.
Dear Mr. Francis Coney, Mr. Schumer has told us about some of the things that Board of Education members are responsible for. We know that being a leader sometimes requires tough decisions and that you have had to make some in your many years as a school board member.
We also know that you and the other board members have a proven record of making decisions that are good for the students of Kement and the Roseville Community Schools.
We want you to know that the students and parents and teachers of Kement Elementary School appreciate your support and we know the completion of the $110 million bond project is a legacy to be proud of.
We also appreciate your support of the $4.5 million Kement School Improvement Grant. On behalf of the Kement Elementary students, we would like to present you with this card, which was created by Mrs. Post and the students in her art class with a Kement Elementary T-shirt.
Okay, good, yeah.
We hope that you will continue to participate on the school board for many years to come and hope that you and the other board members will come and visit us soon to see the many opportunities for success that you have helped to provide. Mr. Francis Coney, please accept our sincere thanks for being a leader in our community and supporting the children of Kement Elementary.
I'd like to thank you very much, I appreciate the honor. It's been my honor to be on the school board all these years. It's, we've seen a lot of changes come, all for the better. Things have, you know, we've lost schools, we've added schools, but things have gotten a lot better. I'd like to also invite people here to come to our meetings. You know, usually our meetings are two or three people here, but you know, you're welcome to come to our meetings if they're open. I guess if nobody comes to the meeting, that means nobody's gotten a complaint, so that's a good thing. Alright, that's it. Oh, yeah.
My mom and my dad came with me. And Grace Patterson.
I am Olivia Skinner and I came with my mom. I'm Jaclyn Brunner and I came with my mom and my dad.
I'm Justine Brunner and I came with my mom and dad.
I'm Adriana Parker and I came with my mom.
Vanessa, do you wanna say your name? What's your name? This is Vanessa and she came with... Her mom. Very good. Now, I have the youngest of five, she never did learn how to talk and then when she did, we never could keep her quiet. Mr. Scott, and Stealin Elementary School.
Gratitude makes sense of our past, brings peace for today, and creates a vision for tomorrow. Stealin Elementary wishes to thank Mr. Scott for all that you do for Roseville Community Schools. The school board, the mighty school board, we want to thank you for all you do. You help us learn and you help us grow, so we just want to say thank you. Oh, the school board, the mighty school board, we want to thank you for all you do. You help us learn and you help us grow, so we just want to say thank you. Oh dear Mr. Scott, we thank you. Oh dear Mr. Scott, we thank you. Oh dear Mr. Scott, we thank you for all that you do. You work all year long to make our school strong. Oh dear Mr. Scott, we thank you for all that you do. Oh dear Mr. Scott, we thank you. Oh dear Mr. Scott, we thank you. Oh dear Mr. Scott, we thank you for all that you do.
Thank you.
Do you want to thank Mr. Scott?
Why don't you turn around and show them?
Show them the banner. Go around and take, turn around, try to turn around the banner. It's called teamwork.
Look at the little one in the front.
Thank you, children, it's really touching. I really liked the song, Ms. Marion always does a good job with you guys. So, I'll give it to you, say your name and who came with you?
You're the school board. Gabriel.
Turn that, your mic turns this way.
Gabriel. Gabriel Langton. Alex McEckern.
Who brought you?
Scott, my dad. Mac Luster. Lily Spar.
Who came with you?
Kylie Alexia.
Guess somebody came with them.
Natasha. Say your name here. Tasha.
Who brought you?
Martha. Hey. I'm a Roche.
Who brought you?
Erica. Erica. Alexinkowski.
Who brought you?
Mason Soshan. Andrew Bushon. Isabel Zucki. Madison Spry. Abigail Pfeiffer.
And who brought you?
My name is Emma Morris and my dad and mom brought me.
And the teachers that accompanied these students tonight are Mrs. Gibson, Mrs. Lefebvre, and the songwriter in the back, Ms. Marion.
Let's see them turning around with the banner again. And Mrs. Janay, and Patton Elementary School. Oh, yeah. Is that a bulldog?
We have Patton Elementary School, like you were, made this right here and put together a little something for you because you are a shining star. Excellent. Ready? And...
Robin with Patton, a special thank you to Ms. Janay who gives of herself every day. To Roseville students, present and past, her love of community is where we last. It all began when her young son Joe, her desire for involvement in the PTO, which led her to becoming the Roseville Schools fundraising, bond building, and programing tool. Who would've thought, who could really know, years have passed and have been remembered as girls. For 26 years and eight months she stayed, her love of Mr. Shook will never fade. Now she's proud of the borough, yet, oh yet, it's true, applying skills and smiles and all that she knew. Why did she do it? Why did she stay? Now that she's retired, she can play all day. She's my gift of her time, this we can see, building an educational community for you and for me. For this, we thank you, Ms. Janay, for your time investment in teaching the community.
Will now be rolling along. Excellent. On behalf of Patton Elementary School, would like to present you with your very own copy of our rap and these flowers that were made by our 2-3 split. Thank you so much. I love music, I took piano when I was your age, so I know how hard it is. You guys did a fabulous job. Thank you so much for having me tonight, I really appreciate it very much. Appreciate serving the district as long as I have, along with Mr. Duncan, many years, and I hope to continue to do so for a while.
and I hope to continue to do so for a while. Thank you very much for coming.
Let's just turn around. The camera, I wanna introduce yourself and your folks that brought you, okay?
My name is Taylor Gibson and I brought my mom and my dad.
My name's Sadie Smith and I brought my mom and my grandma.
My name's Jac Poliga, I brought my stepmom, my dad and my sister.
My name is Morgan Mega and I brought my mom and little sister.
My name's Cameron Charette and I brought my friends, grandma and mother.
My name's Alexia Brinsby and I brought my mom.
My name is Michelle Coffold and I came by myself.
Now we hear so many saying bad things about students, but... Roseville's not the best, I have to tell you, we have the best. I'm a teacher, my dad. Thank you again very much, we all appreciate it very much. Thank you for coming on a cold night. Absolute pleasure.
Thank you.
Well, I hope everybody enjoyed yourselves. Before we let you go, because we're gonna have our board meeting, we're gonna do a comments from Board of Education members, so I know they all wanna say something. So we'll start with Mr. McCartney.
Well, with just respect to Eastland Middle for honoring me tonight, I have to say that Stealin really kinda stole the show there. That's all I have, thank you.
Mr. Scott.
I want to thank the Stealin students, parents, staff that showed up, and all the parents. This is one of the better, the, one of the better, of course graduation is, but this one's right up there with it, because it's nice to see the young kids and watch them grow up and be proud of their school system. Thank you.
Mr. Francisconey.
Just, uh, thank you to everyone for coming tonight and, uh, appreciate the students and, again, when you have the little kids in here, it's always just, uh, the showstoppers, they're fantastic. So are the older ones too, but the younger one is so cute.
You have to do a good job.
They do a really great job, yep, thank you.
Screen.
Uh, I'd again like to say thanks to everybody for coming. It's been an enjoyable night and, uh, it's one of my favorite nights also. Thank you.
Mr. Swit?
Uh, once again, you know, has to be one of the tops of my, you know, of the year this night and, uh, you guys, uh, you never, never, never enough words to, uh, to say to you guys. And, uh, Pete, uh, just a heads up for the high school, I know we had a rough week, last week. Uh, thank your staff, your students, your crisis team. Once again, congrats, thanks.
Joe?
Pretty much said everything. Uh, thank Kaiser, you guys did a great job for me. I always thought of Roseville, like grew up here and it's like a big family. And I can see that still exists. And I hope to see all you kids at graduation.
Not this year. Thank you everyone again, we really appreciate you coming out on a cold night, it lifted our spirits this week and we really needed it this week.
Mr. McCartney, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Young women and men, thank you for coming here tonight. You guys are our future, we're very, very proud of you. Parents, thank you for coming out on the cold night and sharing your children with us. Kids grow up real fast. Every day is precious, the more time you can spend with them, the more you can encourage them to learn, the better off all of us will be, especially when somebody will be contributing to my social security someday. So, thank you for supporting the Roseville Schools. It's the first meeting of the year, so I hope all of you had a very, very merry Christmas. And I know this is gonna be a blessed year for all of you and for the schools. That's all.
Mr. Lefebvre?
Just thanks to the staff that put it together and for the parents who brought your kids.
Everybody did a really nice job honoring the board and the parents must be very proud of their children. Ms. Basil?
It's always a charming evening, we really enjoy it. And I was struck by, at one point, by the example of how we sort of take care of each other in this district. By that, I mean if you noticed how the high school kids came up and coached those Kaiser kindergartners, their song and obviously their choreography. It's, uh, a lot of that takes place around here and it always makes us feel good.
Mr. Denny?
Talents of these children, young and old, are just amazing. It's always a pleasure to see it.
Last but not least, Mr. Stealin.
I just wanna congratulate the board and thank you for the hard work, that dedication you guys contribute to the school district.
Thank you, our pleasure.
A lot. Congratulations on all you kids, it's awesome.
Well, we know you all want to go home and study, so we're gonna let you go early unless your folks really wanna stay for the meeting. Pardon, okay, we'll take about a five minute break or so, so you can leave. Thank you so much for coming out tonight, we really appreciate it.